Billingsley.
Here.
Commissioner Childers?
Here.
Commissioner Headless?
Here.
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Commissioner Bone? Commissioner Hall?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins?
Here.
All right, and we do have a quorum. I would ask everyone, if you will, please silence your phone, put it on airplane mode, turn it off, so we're not interfered with during the meeting. And if you will stand with us, I've asked Commissioner Childers to pray and Commissioner Perkins to lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Thank you, Father, for the opportunity to serve you in this way. We ask God that you be with us as we make decisions for the county. Thank you so much for everyone involved here. Thank you for bringing Commissioner Billingsley back to us, and we thank you so much for his help. We ask God that you forgive us where we failed you, and that we'd be found faithful in your service. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I thank everyone for coming. Do I have a motion to approve our agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Billingsley. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would like for the skid steer to be pulled from consent, and that can be put under Commissioner Bone.
Okay, we'll move the A under Commissioner Bone under consent, and move it to him under the regular items.
And Mr. Perkins, should Mr. Bone not show up, we can, uh, Mr. Perkins can handle that part.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? All right, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it is unanimous. Now, we have public comments. We have Jana Zelski with Butterfly Bridge. If you will come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry, I was rushing out of a board meeting, so I'm a little out of breath. I'm gonna head you guys just a couple of things.
Thank you.
And I told Sheriff he couldn't speak.
He did.
Yeah. I may be in, I may be in orange after this meeting.
Okay. So I just wanted to come by because, first of all, it's been a while since I've just been to a meeting and come before you. Some of you I've not even met yet. So, um, some of you that are, are new, I don't think I've met Ms. Sheila yet, so it's nice to meet you. I'm Jana, and I serve as the Director of Butterfly Bridge. And so, um, I wanted to make sure that you guys knew, first of all, how grateful we are for the support that this commission has given us since we started in two thousand nine, right here in Chilton County. Um, we now have offices in Elmore and Eltaga as well. Um, but essentially, um, I can say that from the very beginning, you guys have supported, um, and in a lot of different ways, and I really, really, really do appreciate it. Um, for those of you who may not be extremely familiar, um, just to give you kind of a quick overview, and I, and if you haven't come for a tour yet, I would love for you to come to a tour as well, because I think you really get it, um, when you see the facility and you hear from the staff. But basically, I'll just use an example. When, um, one of Sheriff Sharon's investigators gets a report to him of child sexual abuse, severe physical abuse, a child's witness to crime, something those kids I should have ever seen, um, his investigators then make sure that the Department of Human Resources is involved in the case, since they are the mandatory reporting agency in the state. And then, and then those two collaborate together, and they contact us at Butterfly Bridge, and we have highly specialized staff who provide the forensic interviews with the children. And I say children, we interview very young children, three years, all the way up to teenagers. So pretty much, when they get a case like that, it's coming to us. Um, and so we have specialized staff to talk to kids in a way that's not leading, it's not suggestive, it's in a child-friendly way, it's in a very open-ended way. The process will actually stand up in a court proceeding. Um, so, and it's all recorded, and it shows as evidence in cases as they move forward into the criminal justice system, if they do. So while, uh, Sheriff Sharon's investigators are doing the remainder of their investigation, what we do there at the center is we focus on the healing part. So we want their trajectory to be much better than where, where they have been. So our staff at that point are focused on, um, giving them trauma-focused therapy services, um, providing support for the non-offending family members. Um, we go to court with the kids, we provide all sorts of services to make sure that those families and those children are restored and they feel from what's happened. So that's the real short form of what we do. But we work a lot with very, very, um, wonderful partners here in our county. Um, I can't say enough about the investigators with the sheriff's office. They have an aggressive group of investigators who do a fantastic job. And so, um, that's a quick overview, overview. But I looked at our stats for last year, and of the hundred and twenty-five new kids that we did forensic interviews with, the sheriff's office investigated fifty-two percent of those. The other forty-eight percent fell in the jurisdiction of the police departments. Um, there were a few cases, but maybe only DHR investigated because of the nature of it. Um, but fifty-two percent of those cases were definitely, they were the ones on that case. The core services that we have, if, if, they're all free. So the families pay zero dollars for all the things I've already described. So if you were bored to put a value on that, though, for each child in each family to get those comprehensive ser- services, it would be about twenty-five hundred dollars per kid. And that's, that's pretty much what it boils down to. Now, some may be more and some may be less, but that's about the, the cost to the agency. So last year, if you flip over, our, our case statistics, of those hundred and twenty-five new cases that, of kids that we interviewed, seventy-two percent of those cases referred to us were because of sexual abuse allegations. Thirteen percent physical abuse, five percent were the child sexual abuse images or any of the technology facilitated crimes. And then ten percent were witness to violence. That could have been a kid saw domestic violence, could have saw, not seen a murder, um, could have seen an abuse of a sibling, it could be lots of different things. But that's pretty much how they shake, they shook out last year. So those sta- stats to me just really highlight the critical need for the specialized services that we provide in addressing all these different forms of trauma. I'm really, really proud of the fact that we actually got a, we're nationally accredited now. So if you go on a national accreditation of child advocacy centers, we are one of the few rural communities in the United States that has a nationally accredited center. And it shows that we use best practices with these kids and on these cases with all of our partners that I've already mentioned. Okay. So, I'm not gonna go over, over all of this, but I just wanted you to have it. Sorry, I have a Ricola in my throat because a little bit of allergy and sinus issues. So, local government funding makes up about four point five percent of our overall budget here in Chilton County. I mentioned that we also have offices in Elmore and Eltaga. Any funding that is raised or given here in Chilton County stays to support the Chilton County office. It doesn't go to Elmore, it stays right here. Same for Eltaga, same for Elmore. Any money given to those supports those offices. So we have a total of about eleven staff members across three offices. And so, we serve the entire judicial circuit. So I just wanted you guys to kind of see how things are shaking out over the last year. Also, I think it's really interesting that when there's this collaborative approach to the cases, or not all working independently one another like it, like it used to be a long time ago, the ki- the kids are served better, number one, but number two, it also saves a lot of money. So when there's a collaboration of law enforcement, DHR, our staff, the DA's office, mental health professionals, medical professionals, it saves about a thousand dollars per case versus like a traditional investigation. So if you were to do the math on those hundred and twenty-five cases last year, it really served Chilton, it really saved Chilton County about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars because we were collaborating and using the Child Advocacy Center and multi-disciplinary team response, because we know that's the best thing for these kids in our county. So, any questions so far?
Hmm, I don't think so.
Okay. One quick thing? Yeah.
Yeah, one minute.
One minute, okay. You guys may have seen our district attorney, he recently posted this. If you turn it over, I won't go through all this, you will, if you turn it over, I basically went back in our records, and I put every single service we provided these two children. And it shows that actually this case was not twenty-five hundred dollars per victim, it's actually about six thousand dollars per victim. So this is just an example from beginning to end. This case started about two and a half years ago. So we were with these kids through the forensic interviews, all the therapy, all the court proceedings, and even went to the sentencing of their offender, Kim and Steve, as at last week. So that's just an example of a recent case and kind of the cost to the agency. But the good thing is, kids can and do get better, and y'all are a part of that, and it's so, so appreciated. So, that's all I got.
Well, thank you, Jana.
Thank you, Jana.
I'll give you thirty seconds, 'cause I don't look good in orange or bracelets.
I'll start out by our relationship, mine and Jana's. I started in two thousand and two, uh, when I became an investigator with the Chilton County Sheriff's Office. And I was going back and forth to Montgomery to child protect. That's when I met Jana. And, you know, think about how many hours on the road going back and forth, you know, with cases and stuff like that, people not wanting to go to Montgomery, cases just going by the wayside, 'cause they didn't wanna, didn't wanna have to go that far, whatever the case may be. You know, a lot of times we may transport, whatever the case. But, you know, a lot of people would just kind of give up on it, you know? It's a, it's a blessing. I wish it was one we didn't hail, but, you know, it was a blessing when Butterfly Bridge started here in Chilton County, and now each one of our counties, Eltaga, Elmore, and Chilton County, we all have a Butterfly Bridge. And, you know, it just amazed me, when I went to investigation, how many child abuse cases walked through my door. And it's sad, but, you know, these kids were broken. You know, these ladies, you know, she's bragging about our department, and I can brag just as much about theirs, because these girls care. They care about these children and wanna make them whole again. And, you know, in two thousand and fourteen, you know, it, it hit my family. And, you know, it's always, it's always been personal to me, you know, about child abuse, but, you know, it really become personal to me just before I took office. You know, I just can't say enough about, you know, anything that they get, that they use for these children. It just, it just helps our county, for these children are broken. These, these girls are pushed back on the right foundation, trying to build these children up again from what they've been so badly treated by some idiot out there in this world. So, you know, anything that y'all might could do to help them, I would greatly appreciate it, because, you know, like I said, it's helped my family, you know, in a bad situation, and it could happen to anybody else's. I mean, you know, we, we just wanna help these children all we possibly can to make sure that they get the right, right foundation to grow physically, spiritually, and morally the way they need to, child should.
Well, they say it's a cycle, so that break, helps break the cycle. I think that would be correct, wouldn't it, Jana? Uh, and for the new commissioners, if y'all hadn't, I've toured, it's worth the time to go tour their facility and see what they do, uh, but I appreciate it. And, uh, I'm sure you've filled the paperwork out for, I'm sure you're asking for money for a budget request for this year.
Uh, well, I will be.
Yeah, we have a, we have a new procedure. If you're requesting money, uh, the ladies in the office can walk you through that.
I think I did that last year.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff, thank you, Jana. All right, Mr. Bob Enoch, Enoch and Associates.
It was fast and accurate. Right, on track. For Black Design Architecture and our firm, Enoch and Associates. I have here the signed off duplicate copies for, uh, when the commission acts on as to be able to sign on the petition contract.
Yes, we'll be able to.
Just. Okay. Um, I think it would be helpful to back up and revisit what brought us here in the first place. We had begun in, uh, twenty twenty-three to work with the city of Clanton, who were, had invited us to help them on a project, which is the Humane Society Facility. And our charge at that time was to prepare drawings adequate to get preliminary pricing from various and sundry competent contractors to establish what their budget was going to be. That was how it all began. It evolved from that to, at some stage, the city was passing off the project to the county, and the county was going to take it from that point forward. At that, the time of that pass off, and for the first time it was ever mentioned to us, the drawings we were preparing were not simply pricing drawings. They were construct, supposed to be construction plans. Well, changed dramatically the landscape for us, because we were then asked by the mayor to, uh, associate with an architect, so that we could complete the project and leave the city, which then became the county, leave the county and the city with a set of buildable drawings, that seals drawings. We were, uh, we're sealing the site drawings, and the architect sealing the building drawings. And they told me I had to find an architect that would do all of that and work with us, and do it for six and a half percent of the estimated construction cost, which they pegged, the city pegged to be three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So that's how, and I, and I retraced that in my communication with y'all. That's how we wound up where we were, uh, in association with Black Design Architects, who were the firm we worked with on the Columbiana Parks Council facility that, that's existing in Columbiana today. That's a project that Black Design Architecture and my firm did, uh, in a joint, uh, effort. So what we, through a process, we had some review comments from the attorney, we had some review comments from different members, and we tried to respond to all of those as best we could in the documents you see in front of you right now. It would, we're in an awkward position in that we've already done the work for which we have proposed contracts, which is kind of the cart before the horse. We've already done the work, but we can't get paid until we have a contract in place. Well, we're trying to get a contract in place. And that's what all of this process is involved. But we're also trying to move the project forward. We care about what happens to those animals down there. The, the architect and I both do, and we want to move the project forward. So that's what we're here tonight for, is to present you with the latest and greatest evidence that we have. Uh, we hope that you can make your necessary reviews of this and respond positively to it, so we can get a contract in place, which we do not now have. And it's very awkward for us, because we have no means, no contractual basis for billing for the services we've already provided. So, anyway.
Uh, I'm sure, I, I know our attorney hasn't had an opportunity to look at this final contract, but something I want to apologize to you for, I think you may have thought that Commissioner Childers and I knew more about how this process worked than we did, uh, Commissioner Childers, about, uh, site plans and building plans.
Yes, sir.
And these are two distinctly different type of, uh, engineering.
Yes, sir.
Seals.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, but we'd like for our attorney to look these over, and we will try to have you an answer at our next meeting, if that's agreeable.
Well, obviously, we're floating out here in midair with nothing to hang on to.
Well, we know we owe you money, we won't pay you, but we understand it a whole lot better now than we did when we started this.
It, it's frankly more.
We didn't, did we ever, I don't know that we ever asked him to do any work for us, have we asked him to do any work?
I don't know that we've got an, a resolution to that anywhere, but a commissioner at the time who was responsible, uh, I think might have obligated this. So I don't know for sure how that's gonna work.
Had, had you talked with any of the commission?
Yes, sir, I've met on site with.
With.
The, uh, Commissioner Childers.
Now, this was handed off to us by the city, and like I said, the commissioner was on, on board with the city when they were starting this project.
Yes, and that was my understanding as well, that, that that all, all trickled in.
Just first I heard of it, but I'm.
Well, it's, first I heard of it was when it was handed to me over in City Hall that day. I didn't know anything about it, so.
Well, if.
We, we have a debt, whether we obligated it at the time or not, we, we need to.
We don't.
Yeah.
Well, part, part of the background of this, and I'm not sure how the mechanics, because this was between the governmental entities, part of the, the background of this was there was a donation made to this, I think it was the city at the time, of about a quarter of a million dollars to cover what we're, our work. And that money was tran, as far as I know, it's been transferred to the county. But it's, regardless of, of whether it may or, may not be obligations, we have done the work we did, and we are as interested in moving forward as we are in getting paid, if that sounds dishonest, it's not.
No, it sounds perfectly, perfectly right.
We want to see, you, you have to go down there and spend a day, as we did, in that facility taking measurements, that existing facility taking measurements, and endure the environmental, it's oppressive, let me put it that way. You don't, you don't want anybody, human or animal, to be left in those conditions. So, anyway, I will leave it to your.
We will definitely discuss this, and we'll have you an answer at our next meeting.
I certainly appreciate it.
Yes, sir, we appreciate you, Miss Tina.
I think we ought to get our administrator to call across the street and see about the money that was donated.
That, that's in the process.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Okay, brings us down to organizational reports, and that would be Ms. Carolyn Fortner, a Verbena resident, who is M4A Program Director, is that correct? Executive, oh, excuse me, Executive Director.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Just a different day.
And if I might say, before, um, Ms. Fortner begins, as Chairman of the Commission, I sit on this board, M4A, for six counties, is that right?
Uh, five counties, and then we do Jefferson County for the senior age program, but five counties.
Five counties, and I was amazed that the programs and the people they reach, and I think most of y'all probably gonna be shocked at how much they reach in this county. So, go right ahead.
Yes, sir. Um, my name is Carolyn Fortner, and I'm the Executive Director of M4A. Um, I just celebrated my twenty-third anniversary at M4A this past January, so, um, yeah, so I'm looking forward to, looking forward to continuing to serve older Alabamians through M4A. Um, before I talk a little bit about, um, M4A and what we do in Chilton County, um, I am a data nerd, like, um, by training, I'm an attorney, and I think I was an okay attorney, but I was a really, really good researcher. So I love data, I love numbers, but, um, it's not just numbers in a vacuum, it's numbers that mean something. So I do want to share some things with you that hopefully will put aging and senior citizens in context, not just in the United States, but also in Chilton County. And I'm sure you all are aware of a lot of these statistics. Um, but, um, according to different resources like US, um, US Aging, and, um, I read one by Kiplinger, um, anywhere from ten thousand to eleven thousand four hundred Americans every day are turning sixty-five. That's, that's a lot of people. So we're definitely living in a country that's getting older, and I'm sure you've also seen a lot of things where, you know, we've got that, um, um, that weird pyramid, where we have all of the small group of, uh, excuse me, a large group of older individuals, people getting older, and then the pyramid kind of goes down as we get to different age groups. And so, you know, for me, as someone who, um, I mean, I love serving older, older people. I mean, that's, um, anyway, that, that's, that is certainly my calling and, and the ministry that I feel like I'm called to. Um, but one of the ways that this impacts is that, um, older individuals are becoming, um, accessing healthcare more and needing more long-term services. So that means, um, anything from in-home services, home maker services, home health services, rehabilitation services, um, nursing home, any of those types of things. And the, the pool of employees for that is getting smaller and smaller. So, um, that's definitely a concern. So, um, I was pulling some statistics on Chilton County, so you thought I was just talking up here in the air. I was pulling some statistics on Chilton County. And one of the programs that we provide in Chilton County is our Medicaid waiver program. The Medicaid waiver program that we operate is a program that is designed to provide services in the home, so that older individuals and people with disabilities have the choice to age in place. They still meet the medical, uh, criteria for nursing home, but definitely not, you know, ready, not needing that twenty-four hour care. But these are very vulnerable people. So when I pulled those numbers, we served a hundred and ninety-two, a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety-two, or a hundred and ninety-four people in Chilton County last year. That's a lot of people on this program. When I looked at the amount that we spent on services, I noticed that we didn't spend a lot of money providing, um, like, home maker and respite services. And that's because we don't have a lot of providers in our predominantly rural counties to provide those services. So Blount, Chilton, Walker, parts of St. Clair, and parts of Shelby County, it's very, very difficult for my agency and the other agencies like mine in Alabama to be able to provide, um, care, because it is, um, it's just not feasible. There aren't workers. Um, and I can go into, you know, why and all that, but the bottom line is there aren't workers to be able to provide the care. So that's the reason why. So I hope that kind of helps you understand or see a little bit about how statistics really do mean something. Um, the other thing that I wanted to share with you is that, um, I think the population in Chilton County is about forty-five thousand. Does that sound about right, about forty-five thousand? Um, approximately twenty-five percent of Chilton County's population is age sixty and older, and that percentage is growing. So I wanted you to be aware of that as well, when we start looking at, um, numbers for Chilton County. Um, and all, everything that I'm saying, um, I put it in here. Um, I don't learn by hearing, I learn by seeing, and I learn by doing. So, um, so I always want to be sensitive, um, to people who are like me, who don't always absorb in a presentation, but you've got to see it, touch it, and, and work with it in order to remember it. M4A is one of thirteen area agencies on aging in the state of Alabama. All of us do basically the same thing. And the only difference is we serve different counties. So M four A, we're responsible for Blount, Chilton, God's Country, Shelby, St. Clair, Walker, and then, as I mentioned, we do, um, we do the senior aid or senior employment program for Jefferson County. M four A is one of over six hundred area agencies on aging in the United States. And a lot of people are surprised to hear that, you know, they, we've, I never heard of an area agency on aging until I started working for M four A. But we've all heard of, like, Meals on Wheels or Homebound Meals, and we're all familiar with senior centers and what they do. So area agencies on aging were mainly known for the meal program. And last year in Chilton County, I think the, the number's in there. I think we served around seven hundred and sixty-eight people just in the hot meal program. And we spent over six hundred thousand dollars feeding senior citizens in Chilton County. And I think it was around a hundred and eight thousand meals. So what that tells me as well is that there, um, there are a lot of people, not just in Chilton County, trust me, it's not just Chilton County. It's all over the United States. Older individuals who, especially during the pandemic, were afraid to come out of their homes because of getting sick. Well, some of them are still not coming out of their homes to attend social events. It doesn't mean that they're not coming out of their homes. But if they normally went to maybe a church function, uh, now they're watching it online. If they went to a senior center, if they attended a community center, activity center, they're probably scaling back on that and not doing that as much. So anytime we socially isolate ourselves and we get our interaction, not from what we're doing here and that's looking at each other and talking to each other, it does have a detrimental effect on our well-being, especially for older individuals. And what the Director for Butterfly Bridge, it really impacted me. During the pandemic, I, I worked with senior citizens. So I definitely looked at how social isolation was affecting certain numbers. And I hate to bring up the word, you know, suicide, but it affected all of those statistics for older individuals because they were socially isolated. Social isolation, if there's an older individual who's living, um, not alone, but with other people, it can create tension if you can't get out of the house. And so we saw incidents of abuse, reports of abuse increase as well. So all of that just created a horrible situation. But it also created that situation in a different way for young people who were also, you know, at home and, you know, isolating, not hanging out with their friends and those types of things. We do think that we're the best kept secret, all area agencies on aging. We want our phones to blow up. We want people to show up at our door. We want to be able to help as many people as possible. M four A's vision is to provide information and services to help people to self-advocate so that they can live the best quality of life. And most of us, as we get older, or, you know, most of us want to live at home. I don't, I don't see anybody, you know, breaking down the doors of assisted living facilities. And my agency works with a lot of nursing home facilities, God bless them. I mean, it's, I'm so grateful, you know, for the services they provide. But nobody's breaking down the doors to get into them. So my agency and other area agencies on aging, a good way to think of our mission is we want to do everything that we can to keep an individual in their home. And the great thing about that is not only is that where people want to be, they want to be in their homes. I tried to move my mom and dad out of their home six years ago. Because I could take, and they lived next door to me. I felt like I could take better care of them at home. They stayed one night. They woke up the next morning. They were all their stuff in a garbage sack, jumped in their car and went back next door. Because we all want to live independently in our own homes. We want to be able to make that choice for ourselves. So that is M four A's mission and the mission of area agencies on aging. The other good thing, so not only is it where we want to age in place, but the other good thing is it's cost-effective. It is less expensive to provide Medicaid waiver services or to provide a meal or to provide home maker services or to try to connect a caregiver with respite services than it is to provide alternate sources of, um, alternate sources of, of long-term care or intervention. Some other services that M four A provides, um, we provide something called SHIP. And SHIP stands for the State Health Insurance Assistance Program. It has absolutely nothing to do with the Navy or ships or boats or fishing. It is actually a Medicare counseling program. Most of the people who call our agency will call us because they have a question about their Medicare or because they want meals or they want to make a referral for meals for a loved one. So meals, food, and health insurance, healthcare, and food are the two things that cause our phones to blow up more than anything. It gives us the opportunity to assess people for other types of benefits. In your packet of information, um, I did provide some examples of people that we've assisted. And one thing I hope you notice about those examples is people may come to us for one thing, but if we have an opportunity to listen to somebody, it gives us the opportunity to take all of the knowledge and all of the community partnerships that we have and bring it to bear on the quality of life of that individual. So someone may call because, you know, daddy has dementia and he's incontinent. And every time I try to bathe him, he is fighting me and calling me names. Well, so we have a program for assistance for that type of thing. But we also learn that daddy is a bird lover. Well, daddy can't have birds because he's in, I mean, maybe he could, but it's probably not a good idea because he's in the later stages of dementia. Well, we have a robotic pet project. So we're able to provide dad with a robotic pet. We have a partnership with U A B with a woman who, um, she specializes in what's called care-resistant behaviors. So we have a coordinator who can work one-on-one with that caregiver to teach her about dementia and to teach her about care-resistant behaviors. We also have respite programs. We have funding to help with supplies, incontinent supplies. So we have a lot of different things like that. So if somebody calls us, for one thing, we have such a tremendous opportunity to be able to listen to them and to try to provide other services as well. Last year, we assisted two hundred and forty-eight people in Chilton County who had questions about Medicare. And I don't know how familiar you are with Medicare, but it's complicated. Somebody who's very near and dear to me, who is a veteran, had Tricare for Life a year ago. I'm not saying anything bad about brokers or anything, you know. We all have our place in the universe. And I'm sure this person had the very best intentions, but took this individual from Tricare for Life, Medicare and Tricare for Life, and put them on a Medicare Advantage plan. So when this individual had to go into rehab, he could not go into rehab here in Chilton County where he, you know, it's, it's God's country to him. He could not go to rehab because the Advantage Plan was not accepted in the, in the hospital and in the places that provide rehab. So he had to go to another county. Now, he's still got really great rehab services. But do you really want to take an elderly man who's had a fall and disabled? I mean, do you really want to take him away from the people that he's familiar with? I mean, he's, anyway, you don't. So, um, so anyway, SHIP, um, our Medicare Counseling Program assists people with those kind of choices. We will ask, what kind of medications do you take? What are your doctors? Have you had falls recently? Where did you go for rehab? Where do you go to the hospital? All of those. Where are your specialists? Are they in network? Are they out of network? So we ask all of those questions and work with lots of people one-on-one. We also have a Medicare fraud program. We assist people who have been scammed. We also have a medication assistance program. Last year in Chilton County, we assisted forty-two people with medication assistance. I know when you have over eight thousand people, forty-two people don't sound like a whole lot of people. But those forty-two people had one hundred and forty-five prescriptions between them. And so that means separate applications for each one of those prescriptions. Altogether, we saved over ninety-three thousand dollars for those people. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, forty-two people, you saved ninety-three thousand dollars. That averages out to sixty-two dollars per script, per prescription per month. So, yeah, sixty-two dollars per month. It added up to ninety-three thousand dollars. Also, one statistic that I wanted to share with you is that Chilton County older adults make up about eight percent of the older adult population in our five-county region. Last year, they accounted for fourteen percent of the first-time callers to, to my agency. And I do have other information. I have all kinds of, like I said, I'm a data nerd. So in the presentation and the proposal that I have, there's all kinds of statistics on grandparents raising grandchildren, veterans. We have a Veterans Directed Care Program at our agency. So there's lots of information in there. And if you want to know a little bit more about the services that we provide, it's in this booklet. You know, we're happy to, I mean, we want our phones to ring. We want people to, you know, if somebody doesn't know you exist, you never have that opportunity to listen to them and to try to make a difference and help them get to where they want to go.
Anybody have any questions? As I said, I sit on the board, and I have been quite impressed with Carolyn's staff and their concern for older people and finding out that we have this many people in Chilton County that are being touched and that many more probably need it. And you've asking for the money for a full-time employee here. So we will take that under advisement. We'll discuss it and see what we can do.
And we are definitely trying to move in this direction as an agency. I mean, in the past, we, we've asked our counties for money. And it's easy to say, oh, we, we take this money and we, you know, match it, and we do. But we really believe that where we need assistance as an agency, we need more people to help more people. I mean, that's truly where we are as an agency. I mean, I don't know how to, I don't know any other way to put it. Unless we have more people, it, it's becoming more and more challenging to help people. And so with funding from, from the county, we will hire a full-time person. And we'll certainly work with you all. I mean, I, I don't, I don't have, you know, I don't know everything. So it'll certainly be, be a work in progress. We'll hire a good person and, and get them to work helping people. But they may go, hey, you know, we really need to be focusing on this for older individuals in Chilton County. This is a huge gap. So then, you know, we'll come here, keep you all informed, and we'll start working on, you know, working on what needs to be worked on. Thank you so much for your time. I was here last night. I, I am a Chilton County girl, and I feel really blessed to have you all looking out for us and planning for our future. So God bless you, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, that brings us down to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved by Commissioner Childers, seconded by Commissioner Headley. It's quite lengthy. The consent agenda consents of the minutes for April twenty-second. Claims list for May thirteenth. Sheriff, a resolution to reclassify Samuel Blackman, full-time deputy. Resolution to approve reclassification of Colin McDaniel as part-time deputy. Resolution to approve the extra duty services proposal. From the Commission Office, additional forty-five hundred to the courthouse project for stainless steel elevator doors. From Donald Giles, Parks Department, resolution to approve new hire Elizabeth Smith as full-time assistant park manager. Under Animal Control, resolution to approve new hires Wesley Pate, full-time tech one. Vivian Abernathy, full-time tech one. Anna Brooks, full-time tech one. Rosa Pierce, full-time tech two. Road Department, resolution to approve new hire Connor Byss, full-time road worker. Danny Floyd Wade, full-time equipment operator, two, truck driver, four. New hire Lyle Neil Littleton, full-time equipment operator, two, truck driver, four. New hire Travis M. Fingers, full-time truck driver, two. Resolution to approve reclassification of Kevin Burnett as full-time road foreman slash equipment operator, three, truck driver, four. Under Commissioner Bone, resolution to approve budget amendments. And I'm not going to bore you with reading those budget amendments. Resolution, under Commissioner Childers, resolution to submit grant application for animal control, ten thousand dollars for spay and neuter. Resolution to establish the two thousand dollar retainer account with Animal Alliance Montgomery. That's for neutering services. And all in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience in that reading. All right, Ms. Leiby at the Commission Office.
I will be asking for a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-five back-to-school sales tax holiday. It will be the weekend of July eighteen through twenty twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins. Second by, he beats it to it, second by Commissioner Headley. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
I'd like to request a resolution to close the board appointment for Central Alabama Wellness. Gina Watley has been nominated.
Do I have a motion to close nominations?
Make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Bone.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Billingsby. All in favor of closing nominations, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Do I have a motion to appoint Gina Watley to this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bone to reappoint Gina Watley to the Central Alabama Wellness. Second, Commissioner Headley. All in favor, let it be known, we're raising your hand. And since there's only one candidate, there will be no need for a panel discussion.
I'd like to ask a resolution to close the board appointments for Regional Planning Commissioner of Greater Birmingham, and Sylvia Singleton has been nominated.
Do I have a motion to close nominations? Commissioner Bone, motion, second.
I second.
Commissioner Childers. All in favor of closing nominations, raise your hand. All opposed? And it passes unanimously. Do I have a motion to appoint Ms. Leiby Singleton to the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham?
I'll make. Motion.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Hall, second, Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
That's all I have.
All right, that's all from the Commission Office. Road Department, Engineer Heath Sexton.
Thank you, Commissioner. Last Thursday, we opened bids for the County Road Twenty-three Road Improvement Project. And I would like to request a, we went, we had four bids. They were all acceptable. They had all the documentation. And, um, and I would like to request a resolution to accept the bids from Duncan Construction, Wiregrass Construction Company, Chilton Contractors, and Asphalt Contractors.
Do I have a motion to accept the bids? Second. Commissioner Headley, motion. Commissioner Childers, second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Thank you. I would also like a resolution to award the contract to Asphalt Contractors who submitted the lowest bid in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars.
Moved by Commissioner Headley, second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Childers, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. All right.
I was also, not sure if it was in the consent agenda, I didn't hear it, but a, to advertise refreeze resurfacing and traffic stripe project.
Oh, I think, I think that was supposed to have been on here too.
Yesterday.
Yeah, it was.
Is it on the consent agenda?
That's okay. No, I don't think it was under consent. Okay, uh, do I have a motion to bid the paint stripping on the roads listed? Motion, Commissioner Headley, second, Commissioner Childers, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us down to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Billingsley.
No, sir.
Commissioner Bone.
Request a resolution to approve the purchase of a skid steer for the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight and fifty-eight cents from Thompson Caterpillar, as we discussed last night.
Motion, Commissioner Bone, second, Commissioner Perkins, I almost said Childers. To purchase a skid steer. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we have six, four, and Commissioner Childers abstains. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Okay, Commissioner Childers.
Yes, sir. Give an update on the animal control. Twice now, we have had what I'd consider a surprise at the Animal Control Department, then at the animal shelter. We have had some folks in the community that were disappointed that the county took over the shelters. And there's some, some folks that are disgruntled and they've pulled a, a lot of stunts. One was to have a contact channel thirteen and all of a sudden we have reporters showing up and trying to catch the, the staff doing something wrong or whatever. Think that ended up backfiring on them. Well, we had an incident yesterday, or this morning. I think it was this morning. My days are getting long. We had someone to call and to the State Veterinarian, Veterinary Board, complaining that we were killing animals at the shelter and that we were allowing the people come down to kill animals at the shelter and just all kinds of stuff. And so this morning, we had the State Board send people up to investigate. They came in an official car with official complaints. Photographer and just happened to walk in on our staff with a surprise. And it shared with our director while they were there. And our, our director engaged wonderfully, professionally. And I'm happy to report that the, that seems to have backfired on those yet again. That the inspector found everything in order, all the paperwork in order, all the stats in order. Made the comment that the place looked better than when she was there last. Offered help, our, our directors going through training and to get the DEA license so that we can keep the controlled substance at the shelter. She has to perform so many hours and then she's able to submit the application for a DEA, DEA license. And although she's even had that application prepared, but she can't send it in yet because she doesn't have the hours, but she's got it prepared. That's how buttoned up our director is. The inspector told her to contact her when, when she gets her hours and that she would help walk that through. So this was another surprise. Another opportunity to show that the Chilton County Animal Shelter is actually better than it was. We asked for six months when we took it over. It hasn't yet been six months, but when you have an inspector from the Veterinary Board to come and, and make positive comments and offer to help the, the way that she has done, I'd, I'd call that a success. So we still have a few more months. We're still working on some stuff. But I'm so very proud of Christina Bollack, our, our director. She is doing a great job down there. And I guess we look forward to the next surprise inspection.
If I may. I have engaged with some of those individuals who consistently try to throw our personnel, our liaison to the animal shelter, under the bus. And it's, it's kind of funny that every time the bus gets cranked up, it backs up over those very people. You know, I grew up having to deal with stray dogs. And that's not something anybody in this county wants to deal with. And I've had animals that I had to have put to sleep. And it's painful, but it's painful for me. It's not painful for the animal. So what they're doing at this shelter is a service to this county. And for people to want to try to run them down is beyond me.
Try to run them out of the county is what they're.
Well, yeah, try to run them out of the county. And none of them, none of them have shown up down there to actually offer assistance. They got plenty of opinions, but that's about as far as it goes. So I commend Christina for handling it the way she did and having that shelter along with Commissioners Hall and Childers, setting this thing up to where it actually functioned for this county. Thank you for that update.
And, you know, something that I did leave out, that she has now got at least six rescue organizations coming and, and pulling animals. We want as many animals to leave out the front door as possible. And we, she's got now at least six different organizations pulling animals out the front door. I think that even though we've ta, we took in like eighty, eighty animals in the month of April, if my numbers are right, we may send out sixteen at a time, but all of a sudden we get twenty, you know? And so it's a, it's a ever-mounting battle down there. But Christina and her staff are staying in the saddle and they're doing, they're doing a wonderful work for our county. I can't be more pleased with what they're doing down there.
So you got six rescues contracted already?
Yep.
And they do take donations if you like to donate dog food, pet food, and anything else.
Right now, yes. Until, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Hill Science Diet Program contract, subject to our attorney's approval. And I would like for that motion to include the Chair to sign that contract once it's approved by the attorney.
All right, I have a second.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just to make a comment, bouncing off Commissioner Bone, once this contract is in place, the only food that we'll be using at the shelter would be Hill Science Diet. It's a high, high-quality food. It'll stabilize the, the shelter. We'll be able to have promotional kits that we use down there for adoptive animals. And if, should the program not be exactly what we think it's going to be, we have a decent out clause that we can exercise. So again, I look forward to hopefully that passing, your Mr., Mr. Attorney, and, and we can begin to save a lot of money. It'll end up costing us about half, a little, little less than half of what we're currently spending to feed the animals.
And they can still donate money. There's other things we can spend that money on. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
And let me make sure that my other thing was on, the grant was on consent, the two thousand retainer was on consent. And I do, I have one other motion. I'd like to make a motion that we pay Chilton County News invoice. This was for reappraisal ads.
Motion by Commissioner Childers, second by Commissioner Headley. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And I abstain.
And I'll ask our office staff, have I left anything out? Okay, good.
Okay, Commissioner Hall.
No comments.
Commissioner Headley.
No.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask for a resolution to approve interstate signage for Higgins Ferry, contract with Alabama Logos, in the amount of twenty-six hundred dollars to be signed by the Chair. That is.
Is that a motion?
That's the motion.
Okay, motion, Commissioner Perkins, to contract with Alabama Logos for signage at the Higgins Ferry exit two oh eight. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Bone, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passed unanimously.
All right. I'm also going to ask for a resolution to approve the revised subdivision regulations as amended.
You're going to ask for, you're going to make a.
He's making it as a resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm making it as a resolution.
Motion, Commissioner Perkins, to adopt the revised subdivision regulations.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Childers. Any discussion?
When will this go into effect?
Immediately.
To be.
Yep.
Does that need to be in the resolutions thirty, thirty days?
Well, all right, so the question would be on section ten-four, the thirty days was governed under amendments. So this is actually revisions where we suspend, we move the effective date of the old subdivision regulations to June.
Repealed, not suspended.
Repealed. Where we moved them to June, or the, the resolution was, we moved them to the effective date of the current regulations to June or earlier, if adopted earlier. So we weren't clear on if they would become immediately or would we have to wait to that June date. The thirty days was for amendments.
We had them then because it would repeal them.
Right, so it's not an amendment, it's a revision. It's an adoption of the entire book.
Okay. We good?
Well, if you're adopting them as, as they.
A revised edition.
I, I, I buy it. I mean, here's, here's the thing, because what it's, it says it, no, I mean, it's, it's a, the, the state statute does not have a provision for the delay. And you do not have the regulations in effect now. And they do, it does only apply to amendments. And so if it's the desire of the Commission to have them in effect now and you're adopting them as a whole, you, you can do that.
Okay. Everybody clear on that? These adopt, these rules are going to affect in the morning. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passed unanimously. Anything else? Commissioner Perkins.
I'd just like to thank everybody for their work on it and the time and the input of the citizens of this county. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I'll add to that, and mine's next. One thing was asked of someone the other day about this commission. I said this commission is pretty much totally transparent. And I think it's been obvious with this, with this process right here because the people had opportunities and they had plenty to sell. So I appreciate the work of Commissioner Perkins and Childers on this. Okay. We need to set the date and time for our work session. Monday, May the twenty-sixth is Memorial Day, and we will be celebrating that day. So do I have a motion of what day and what time to change our work session to?
Chairman, I'll make the motion to change our work session to Tuesday, May the twenty-seventh at six thirty PM and the regularly scheduled meeting to seven thirty PM that day.
Okay, we have a motion to change our work session to May twenty-seventh at six thirty and the meeting at seven thirty on the twenty-seventh. Now, if we finish the work session sooner, we'll have to wait to start the meeting. Everybody understand that.
If everyone will.
I amend it to seven.
If everyone will do their, their due diligence and, and work, I, I mean, I don't see why we couldn't start it at seven.
All right, well, I'll amend the, I'll amend the motion to do the work session at Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five at six thirty PM with the regularly scheduled meeting to seven PM.
As of any objections to him changing his motion? Okay, if not, all in favor of the work session at six thirty, the meeting at seven on May twenty-seventh, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Now I have one thing. Jordan Mills will be here with us at this twenty-seventh meeting. Okay. That's the lobbyist with. Now, now I can't even, Hirschman.
Williams and Jensen.
Williams and Jensen. Yeah, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Hold on, you got, you got one more. You got one more on you.
Regulations that Sylvia circulated this afternoon.
I did not see that. Oh, first, can I, can I get a resolution to approve Thompson tractor invoices?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Perkins, second, Commissioner Bone, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Six, four, and Commissioner Childers abstains. Now, the question about the, the park rules, but we've already. Yeah, they were passed back in September.
Commissioner Williams, did I not get on the agenda again?
No, sir. That would have been.
This is the second time in.
I will address, I, I will address that in the morning, sir, and see why you didn't get on the agenda.
Will you let me know?
Yes, sir. I'll let you know. And I'll make sure, do you want to be on the next agenda? We'll go ahead and take care of that now.
Sure.
Please put him on the agenda for our next meeting. Please give him your name and phone number, please, before he leaves. Okay, now do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion with adjourn.
Motion, Commissioner Bone, second.
Second.
Commissioner Childers, all in favor, raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Everybody have a good night.